It looks like we're unanimous on that direction. All right? Any questions, Gabe? No. Okay. Thank you all. Thank you. Introduction of new business. Presentation of research from other municipalities on the deployment of motorized scooters. All right. Groom given this one. Or is it Gary? It's Groom.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Once again, Groom Avok, Public Works Director. I'm only here to introduce the topic and acknowledge the hard work that the team did on this particular item. Gary Heap championed the topic. Neuron did the research and put together a report. And Julie Oats did the editing. And I put the finishing touches on it. So with that, I want to acknowledge Gary to do the presentation. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor Protem and members of the council. Good evening. I hope you enjoyed reading the scooter white paper and the staff report this evening. It's quite lengthy. Unfortunately, my staff report this evening is a little bit lengthy as well. I will try and shorten it up and go very quickly. It summarizes basically the white paper in the staff report. And so I will, again, try and speed through it this evening. Is there a limit? Oh, absolutely. Get a drink of water and off I go. Okay. So in terms of background, shared micro mobility modes, including bicycles and e-scooters, are recognized as new and popular modes of transportation. A Bay Area scooter service provider made a presentation to our B-PAC. And our chair is here this evening. I have a feeling he's going to be up in a little bit speaking on the topic. To our B-PAC in November of 2018. The city council then requested that staff investigate the feasibility of motorized scooter services within the city. And based on that, city developed or Public Works developed a white paper, which is what got presented and attached to the staff report this evening. It provides an in-depth information on electric scooters, reviews best practices of other jurisdictions, gives a history of scooters, et cetera. And so, again, I'm going to go through that this evening. So talking about the history of micro mobility and scooters. Micro mobility devices are not new to transportation. They've been around for quite some time. In fact, electric scooters themselves were invented back in 1913, back in New York. You guys love the picture, I'm sure, within the white paper. And at one point were actually proposed for use by the United States Postal Service. Unfortunately, they became a little bit too expensive and were never fully adopted due to cost. Current trends in usage. Currently, there are more than 15 e-scooter companies throughout the United States. Early adopters in the e-scooter business included Santa Monica, which currently has four licensed providers, and Austin, which currently has 10 providers with over 14,000 scooters in use in their city. NATCO, which is the National Association of City Transportation Officials, reported in 2018 that e-scooters had already overtaken station-based bike-share systems. So these things are very popular. In fact, if you remember, we had Lime Bike almost ready to come to the city a number of, maybe months ago, almost a year or so ago. And right at the point where we were just about to get them to start deploying bicycles, they said, whoa, timeout. We're pivoting. We're going to scooters and e-scooters. We're not doing bikes anymore. So everybody's shifting to scooters. These are becoming very popular. By the end of 2018, over 85,000 e-scooters were available for public use in over 100 cities in the United States. So we're going to talk about challenges with deployment. We're going to talk about safety standards and regulations. We're going to talk about various violations and issues associated with that. Device management, education and outreach, and then the impact on city resources. So with regards to safety standards, the safety standards we're finding out are left to the cities to define. And there are many concerns regarding safety, especially around injuries. A study in Austin, in fact, showed that out of the 192 injuries that were studied in this one study, that we found 48 of them involved head injuries. 70% of those sustained injuries to the upper body of the 192 studied. 55% studied within the study involved injuries to the lower limbs. 35% of the riders sustained bone fractures. Almost half of the injuries within the study, 80 of those folks studied out of the 192, were considered severe. And of those, less than 1% of the riders were wearing helmets at the time of the injury. So when it comes to safety and use of the scooters, wearing helmets is a big concern. In Santa Monica and LA, studies have shown that only 4% of riders actually use helmets. And as for where those injuries occurred specifically, 55% were injured while riding in the street, where 33% were injured where it went on the sidewalk. A study that we identified from Portland, Oregon, found that hospital visits for scooter-related injuries accounted for about 5% of their total injuries from traffic-related conditions or collisions within the entire city. 5% of all their collisions, traffic-related collisions were related to scooters. Now looking at violations. So in an effort to combat scooter-related injuries, some cities have implemented kind of experimental or trial regulations to enforce practices to protect the communities and the folks that are actually using the scooters. San Diego, in fact, now requires that all scooter riders wear helmets. So it's important to know that California gives the option for riders, if you're 18 or older, to wear a helmet. It does not require it. If you're below 18, you're required to wear a helmet. But if you're over 18, you do not. San Diego, though, however, did implement their rules or their laws that required everybody to wear a helmet that used a scooter. They made this law change in 2018. And for example, before the law went into effect between 2014 and 2017, only 11 citations were issued for inappropriate scooter use. When the law was implemented, that number jumped to 1,500 violations in 2018 alone. So as you can see, you know, there's a significant impact. There can be a significant impact to the number of violations depending on the different rules that go into effect. Device management, that's something where we know can be a significant issue. Fleet size. Many cities have adopted pilot programs to limit the amount of scooters. Parking is also an issue potentially. According to a study by the Manetta Transportation Institute downtown San Jose, 70% of the scooters that they identified in their downtown were parked on the sidewalk. Now, 90% of those scooters did not disrupt pedestrian traffic. So that was pretty good. And only 2% of the scooters blocked disabled access, which is, I think, a lot lower than what we had expected. We thought that, you know, scooters, and we all expect scooters to be all over the place and laying on the grounds, et cetera. What they found in the study is that only 2% of the scooters blocked the disabled access. Now, they did also identify that, given the fact that the study was a time and location specific, that they thought that more data and research was needed to determine the actual impacts of scooters in the public right-of-way. But this initial study kind of gave us good thoughts in terms of the actual maintenance and management of scooters in the public right-of-way. Education and outreach can also be a challenge. Rapid rollout of scooters requires a significant amount of public outreach. The city of Portland, we found, developed material on e-scooter laws and proper writing in five different languages and distributed over 5,000 copies to the residents. They also created a heavily-used website. And city staff solicited community input and hosted safety events and helmet giveaways at a number of different events, pop-up events all over their city. E-scooter companies were also directed to include riding rules on their application interface and post them physically on the scooter. So they got very creative with the scooter company they contracted with when it came to outreach and education to their community. So anytime you have a lot of outreach, that, of course, has its impact to city resources. So outreach effort like Portland does require a lot of staff, staff resources. Many cities have created new staff positions and, in fact, to do a number of issues or a number of things like administer those permits, monitor and respond to permit compliance issues, and educate riders, partners, and partners and the public. Introduction of e-scooters into the community has an impact to the police department as well. And cities are evaluating cost recovery measures. Cities of Santa Monica and Los Angeles are two examples of those cities that are looking at different cost recovery measures. And in fact, Santa Monica has a model that is, that they're using where they're charging their scooter vendors $20,000 annually, $130 per device, and a dollar per device per day, which is resulting in a fee of about $1 million per year for the scooter vendor that is in use in their city. And that, of course, then is rolled into funding for staffing and management of their program. Now let's take a look at the regulations at the federal, state, and local level. I'm almost there. So the federal government is concerned with safety of personal transportation devices. And a scooter is defined as a personal transportation device. But they're not currently governed by the US Department of Transportation. In fact, scooters are controlled by the Consumer Product Safety Commission, whose purview is actually limited to the manufacturer and importers of the device. So they're concerned about the braking systems and the lighting systems on the device, not actually the operation of the device. So they're actually not really set up, and they're kind of ill-equipped to regulate the full spectrum of these micro mobility technologies. At the state level, regulations on micro mobility devices vary widely from state to state. In fact, only six states, California being one of them, specifically address e-scooters. And in fact, it's in our California Vehicle Code. E-scooters must use the road unless there is a bike lane. And then the vehicle code says they must use the bike lane. E-scooters also must yield to pedestrians. And the California Vehicle Code allows authorities to control the regulations and permit these devices, the local agencies, and that would be the city. So we can create our own regulations locally to specify how these devices are used within our city. Locally, with the limited regulations at the federal and state level, local agencies are responsible for the oversight of e-scooters in the public right-of-way. Unfortunately, there are very few examples of published policy guidelines for those regulations. And so there's not a lot of examples to fall back on. But we feel that as the field evolves and lessons are learned, new guidelines and best management practices will become available. Now, if we're going to move forward with a program, these are the things that we should consider in terms of deployment. We need to think about how we're going to authorize, provide authorization to the vendors, scooter management, enforcing the parking restrictions, fleet size restrictions, the permit fees and pricing and duration of the program, the data that we can collect, the equity requirements and safety. In terms of the vendors and how we select them, we need to determine the mechanism to find the e-scooter vendor, if we go out for an RFP or if we go through a permitting program. Right now, the only city that we were able to find that uses an RFP process is Sunnyvale. Everybody else tends to use a permitting process. In terms of right-of-way policy, we need to determine the use of the public space and enforcement mechanism and put that clearly in a policy document that we create. And then in terms of cost recovery, we need to figure out what we want to charge and how that funding will eventually be used.
Gary, is there currently an e-scooter vendor asking to locate in Gilroy right now?
We had, the B-PAC did reach out to Bird, who then did the presentation. So at this point-
That was, you mean last year?
Yes.
Right. Is Bird still interested in coming to Gilroy?
As far as we know-
Okay. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Although we have not had any contact with Bird since that B-PAC meeting.
That's why I was asking, because neither have I. And usually they contact, yeah. Okay.
In terms of sustainability, we need to further discussions regarding sharing of service provider data. Data is really key. We do know that data is accessible. Data can be collected by the service providers. Which, the question is, can that data be shared then with the city? Or will they freely share it with the city? We feel that's important because that data can be used to help shape the regulations and process for future deployments. And then, again, working with the different providers. And we feel the pilot program, if we're going to move forward, will provide us an opportunity to explore the many options, determine which companies might be best partners to meet the company's specific mobility needs. Scooter management. There are three identified options in terms of scooter management, how these are parked. There's the unrestricted parking option, where they can basically be left anywhere so long as they're not blocking ADA-required parking or sidewalks. There's encouraged placement, where they can be left most places with some limitations. And then there's the lock-to option, where they're actually being required to be locked to fixed objects. Regardless, blocking sidewalk is always prohibited. And we will make sure that's in any kind of guidelines we carry forward. Many cities do restrict parking to hard surfaces outside the sidewalk area, what they call furniture zones. And then some cities have marked areas on street within defined parking spaces, like bike corrals would be on street. So they use those for, could be used for scooters. Enforcing parking is another consideration. Most cities rely on reporting, reported problems or spot checks to assess compliance. Unfortunately, the limited access on the scooters themselves, the GPS devices don't allow for enforcement using the remote means. As the GPS technology improves, however, and we just heard recently about one that has recently come out using military-grade GPS on their devices, there might be the ability to actually do enforcement via GPS. But right now, the majority of the devices or scooters do not have GPS that's strong enough to actually enforce the parking restrictions using the GPS, the onboard GPS. Fleet size. From our research, there's really no set standard for fleet size, which, again, points to the need for a pilot program. Santa Monica currently has four companies that deploy about 2,000 scooters and 1,000 bikes within the city limits. In talking to San Jose today, they have five companies that they're using, and they have about 5,500 scooters throughout the city. That's a lot of scooters. Many scooters have established maximum fleet size requirements and developed a process for expansion based on meeting performance indicators like the number of trips per scooters per day. However, what we're understanding is that the scooter companies like to right-size their fleet. They like the flexibility to expand or reduce their fleet size based on usage, which we think is a smart way to move forward, if that's the direction we're going to go. Fees, pricing, and duration. There's not really a one-size-fits-all formula. Cities are a combination of permits, like permit fees, licensing fees, application fees, per-unit fees, relocation fees, and bonds to fund their program. And again, that's up to us to create and determine how we want to move forward with that, if that's something we want to do. Some cities require vendors to provide infrastructure costs and right-of-way maintenance and repairs, which is something that we might want to look into. And many cities, again, use pilot programs with specific end dates to be reviewed every six months or annually. And then that data, again, data. Electric scooters have the capacity or capability to record and share data with the service providers or the scooter providers. The key is getting those service providers to share that data with the city. The type of information that's available is the ridership, the demographics, this device locations and trip locations. And having that access to the data allows the city to make informed decisions and create policies for specific purposes based on that data available. Equity requirements is also key. E-scooters provide equitable transportation options for underserved areas. There are also guidelines that require or request service providers to offer affordable non-smartphone options for customers with an income level at or below federal poverty levels. Not everybody has a smartphone. And all these scooters typically require a smartphone app to use. So there are cash options available, options available for the folks that don't have phones. In fact, the city of LA has a policy that requires service providers to offer low-cost alternative plans to customers below the 200% of the federal poverty level. Safety is a huge hurdle. Safety standards have fallen under the responsibilities of the city, as I indicated. And safety means evaluating not just the use of e-scooters, but the entire transportation ecosystem, rider interaction with the city infrastructure, and the existing modes of transportation, and creating new regulations and safeguards of the community. So in conclusion, last two slides. Last two slides. Significant upswing in micro mobility devices in the past several years, including bikes and scooters. These e-scooters have become heavily used in many US cities, accounting for a third of micro mobility trips. Currently, more than 15 e-scooter companies are in existence. Challenges, concerns regarding deployment, storage operations, many cities have entered into pilot programs. Once deployed, challenges include preventable accidents to riders, blockage of travel ways, lack of timely removal of defective or improperly-placed scooters, and undue burdens on city resources. It's important to develop a policy that addresses type, location, and number of scooters allowed in the city. And the policy needs to address process to authorize vendors, provisions to deal with parking, cost recovery, and access to vendor data. It's a good idea to start with a pilot program with one or more vendors that identifies fleet size to each vendor, permit process, permit fees, equitable distribution, and most importantly, safety considerations. Now, importantly, we did reach out to some folks here in the city, both the GDBA and the Chamber of Commerce. Both in general, I'll just highlight it quickly, supported it. Both thought that we should be open-minded regarding implementation. Both had safety concerns. Both thought that it warranted a pilot program. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions of staff before I go to public comment? Okay. Let's go to public comment.
We have Zach Hilton, Bill O'Connor, and then Jack Howe.
Good evening, City Council, Public, and Staff. I'm Zachary Hilton, Chair of the Gilroy Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. I'm here tonight to support this agenda on e-scooters and all the various micro mobility options that are currently available to us. It's in support of your adopted economic development incentive framework. Let's be visionary. Anticipate cutting-edge technology and future technologies, both within city services and in the community as a whole. Maximize the use of smart infrastructure through partnerships that expand technology and create value for our residents. Enhance and streamline the workflow for internal and external stakeholders to the use of technology. Gilroy Costco is selling e-scooters today. You can buy them online, and many of them are used around town and to commute by Caltrain and VTA. Well-connected bike networks like ours have shown to keep e-scooters and scooters off bikes and bikes off sidewalks. We have the capacity to fit scooters. And we aren't going into this blindly. There are best practices all around us in a national best practices playbook from Transportation for America. Through an RFP or permit process, we control the expectations and guidelines with a strong ordinance and permit process for all micro mobility options. Many cities are writing ordinances that include various modes of transportation, such as the use of electric one-wheels and electric skateboards, so they don't have to go back for the process every single time. Both of those are sold online and being used in the city currently. Caltrain is currently studying ways to increase walking and rolling to their stations without the use of automobiles. Our parking lot at the Caltrain station is getting more full, is getting more fully today, and there are no plans to expand the current parking. Last year, the outdoor industry generated $92 billion in consumer spending, $6.2 billion in state and local tax revenue, and 691,000 jobs. There is a large segment of our population that doesn't want to own a car or simply can't afford it. Owning your own car is not a dream that occurs to everybody once they turn 16 anymore. Walking and rolling is still the safest and cheapest way to travel compared to the automobile. Speeds can be governed down in high pedestrian areas unlike automobiles with the use of technology. We are building and planning our streets with a complete streets approach since 2012, and we plan for current and future generations. We welcome the increase of traffic by walkers, bikers, scooters, one-wheelers, and skateboarders. It means our neighbors are staying local and being active in the community. The most liberating way to live amongst all incomes and the most profitable investment we can make in a community today are to make them more walkable and bikeable. Thank you, City Council, for listening to this opportunity. And know that if you decide to move forward, you have a dedicated commission that has the capacity to ensure we do this the right way. We are already out in the public doing education and encouragement throughout the year. Now with a dedicated funding source from Measure B that was passed earlier today, our efforts will be even more sustainable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bill O'Connor. Then Jack Howe.
Mayor Protem Blankley, Council members. I noticed in this presentation that we talked about, you know, injuries to the riders, but not injuries to pedestrians. You know, I saw that the state requires them to operate in the street. My big contact with these scooters was up in, is up in San Jose several times. They're not riding in the street. They're riding on the sidewalks, and they're running by you. You haven't talked about what the injuries are to, are to the pedestrians. In fact, when you talked about, even in the end, what the concern was is the safety of the riders, not the safety of the pedestrians. You know, I'm all for bikes. I think a bike and a scooter is basically equal as far as the kind of time you can make. Bikes, when I see them riding the streets, the scooters ride on the sidewalk. I think they put pedestrians in danger. And also, I mean, also looking at your facts, you came in and said that, you know, 90% of the scooters that were parked on the sidewalk weren't in the way of pedestrians or the sidewalk, which means that 10% of them are in the way. So just, you know, looking, you know, I'm not really high on this idea of scooters, you know, unless you're going to guarantee that they're in the streets and you're protecting the pedestrians. We have a lot of people that walk here, and they're a hazard. Thank you.
Jack Howe.
Good evening, Council. My name's Jack Howe. I'm a longtime resident of Gilroy. You'll see me walking all over town on a daily basis. That's my only exercise. It's a struggle every step. I have mobility issues. Balance isn't a real problem for me. When, we'll start with bikes. When bikes come up behind me, I can't hear them. They're too quiet. And when they blow by me without slowing down, without ringing a bell, without saying passing left, they run the risk not only of me losing my balance and falling, but taking them with me. Cane could go through their spokes, whack them in the head. Not a day goes by that I don't have a bike do that to me from behind. They also startle me by suddenly coming out of a parked driveway or around a corner, square into my lane, right at me. And if I'm lucky, I have enough time to dodge one way or another. And I don't dodge quickly. So, you know, if you're going, if these things stay on the street, I have less of a concern. My problem is that bicycles today are anywhere and everywhere in this city. They're not following pedestrian rules. They're not following vehicle rules in the road. Where's the enforcement? Cars. Same problem. I can't go past a single intersection in this town without seeing cars running stop signs, running park, stoplights, diving through right turns or left turns with no care for who might be approaching the intersection on the sidewalk. I see them coming up to make that right turn, and they are looking left. What about the bike that's coming from the right on the sidewalk, going fast? If you're going to do this, if you're going to allow these things in town, then give some thought to what you're going to do to, first of all, bolster the compliance of laws for bikes and cars before you flood the streets with these things. The numbers said something like the percentage of blockage of ADA, but it didn't talk about blockage of sidewalk in general. 33% of the accidents on sidewalks. How can they be that many accidents on the sidewalks when they're not allowed on the sidewalks? So if you're going to consider this, please consider the whole package and prepare for some enforcement to go along with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speaker cards? Okay. Back to Council. Anybody want to say anything on this? Okay. Councilmember La Romanios.
Yes, I'll start with a couple of comments. You know, the first is with regard-
You know, the first is with regard to some of the safety concerns and looking at the helmet use of the riders. You know, the nature of the scooter use really doesn't lend itself to helmets. I would, I'd be very curious to see what San Diego learns from their experience requiring people to use it. I mean, the way these scooters are used is that people kind of, kind of, they plan their day out, they go out somewhere, they're walking, you know, for a while, they're going to a farmer's market, they're walking through town, whatever it is. And oftentimes, it's kind of just a coincidence that you come across one of these things, and you're like, oh, okay, well, I've got the app, I can use it, this will speed up my trip, whatever. So they're very impromptu, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And as such, I don't think I've ever seen anyone riding these things who brings a helmet with them, thinking that they're going to run into it. So I think requiring helmet usage, although is a noble, you know, kind of intent to protect people from themselves, I just don't think is realistic. You were going to say something?
No, I agree.
Okay, that was just one point. So that's on, that's on the helmet usage and the safety. The other thing, and I'm glad you brought this up about the burden to the city, is the cleanup of or removal of the scooters. And so, I mean, the nature also of how these are used is that people will take them from point A to point B, and they'll, they'll leave them at point B. So you know, you might be on First Street and say, okay, well, I'm going to go all the way over to 10th Street, so I want to go to, you know, Poyo Loco or wherever. And so you use it, then you get there, and then you just kind of leave it there, you just kind of park it there on the sidewalk. And that's, that's all well and good, but as we think about how these are going to be deployed around the city, I would just want us to have a plan in place to make sure that this is not a burden that the cities are left with, where people are calling up saying, hey, there's been a scooter out here for four hours, and it's whatever. So whatever the arrangement is with the, you know, the project or the pilot executor, I would really want to see in place that they have a solid plan for a timely removal of the, of the scooters themselves. And then the last thing that I thought about, this reminds me a lot of a biking company, rental biking company or bike share, a company called OFO. OFO was a biking company that has kind of a similar model where you could use an app, you could get a bike, you take it from point A to point B. And the challenge is, they went out of business, and it kind of all blew up very quickly. And there were stories from all over the world, actually, in different countries and certainly here in the United States, about bikes that were just kind of abandoned, and largely because the company simply didn't have the resources anymore, and so cities were kind of stuck with the cleanup of all of that kind of stuff. And there, there were these pictures online of these bike graveyards with these retired bicycles or abandoned bicycles. So I would want to see some planning for, hey, what happens if all of this goes south? And, you know, how are we going to take care of it? So those are my, those are my general concerns, but I think I'm largely very curious about what a pilot program will look like, because again, I do see the potential benefits of increasing mobility in different ways for people. I think it's also important, as we consider about talking about how to attract younger residents. These are things that they expect. These are the amenities that they expect. We have to be realistic about that. So with that said, those are just some of the concerns that I would like to have fleshed
Thank you. Councilmember Marx.
Well, I too agree with what Councilmember, you know, said. I have those concerns too. And there are pros and cons to this, but also being in San Jose, there are a lot of scooters that are being driven erratically. And I'm sitting back here, and I'm thinking, what, you know, it showed that, yes, the city, as that one city was making a million dollars a year, but I would really like to know, what was that city's expenses? Because they have to hire a lot of staff to monitor this. We would have to increase maybe an officer who's, or two, to go out there with citations. I know personally, I'm not ready to make a decision one way or the other tonight. We need way more information to see how other cities are handling this and how we would handle this, and how expensive it would be. Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Barco.
First of all, I'd like to know if any of these companies are even interested in coming to Gilroy. I understand San Jose, they go all over the place, and there's nowhere to park, and it's hard to drive up there. And, but I don't see any of these companies really wanting to invest in Gilroy. And I will not support anything that the city's going to put a dime into. I'm not really for this. And I would like to know, in the cities that are using them, how many times has a city been sued over it when they hurt somebody? Because the city's got it there, the city's going to get sued, we know that. So that's something else we need to take into consideration.
That's an interesting question on the, on the suit stuff, because we have car accidents, but the city doesn't get sued over car accidents, so.
We get sued over sidewalks.
We do, and two independent, okay, never mind. Okay. Councilmember Tucker.
Actually, I'm in favor of trying a pilot, but I agree with Councilwoman Barco. I don't think anybody's going to come here, nobody's really pushing this. If you can get someone, if you can get someone to come here, I'm in favor, as long as all these restrictions are in place and agreeing that, you know, a pilot program first. Because if it does become too onerous for our police or for our citizens walking on sidewalks, then we can ax it. But honestly, I see them already. People have them. So I don't understand how this is going to be implemented. You're talking about a vendor coming in and doing it, but I was just noticing a young man in our neighborhood who had an electronic scooter, just running all the stop signs, running the red lights, doing all that. I mean, that's typical of some bad bicycle people as well. But you're talking about a program here for a vendor to come in. I'm talking about, well, how are you going to differentiate someone with their own or someone with, using this E1, right? Whether they're misbehaving on the sidewalk, or whether they're blocking or not blocking. You're going to have that problem anyways. So whether you, whether we agreed to have this pilot program or not, you're going to have to come up with some sort of way through the PD to monitor this, just as much as you would, I think, bicycles, because this is becoming the thing. And I think it is the new, the new bicycle. I mean, we even have signs like at Safeway and Nob Hill about skateboarders. Don't skateboard here, don't skateboard here, but they still do. So you're not going to be able to regulate these things. If they're out there and teens want to use them, or young adults want to use them, they're going to use them, they'll just buy them themselves. So either way, we're going to have to take a look at how we regulate it. That's all I'd say. But I'm in favor of going forward with a pilot program.
Okay, so my, my comments are just these. The difference between somebody owning their own and the company is, the ones who own aren't leaving them somewhere. So that's the only difference there that I see. Bird contacted me last year. It was around this time last year, I met with somebody from Bird who was very interested, but I have not heard from that person at all since. So I don't know either, which is why I asked the question earlier, whether or not this is coming before us because there is a vendor out there asking to come in, or if this is our Bike and Ped Commission just wanting to pursue this because it is another form of transportation, which is wonderful. But me, I would support, if there is a vendor already wanting to come in, I would support a trial, just very much like what we were planning to do with Greenbike, Greenbikes? Limebikes, green, lime. Okay, yeah, something like that, because within that three- or six-month period, we can then identify what exactly are the problems, what is it costing us, what would it cost us to have to enforce the things that we are seeing, and go from there. But without a vendor actually asking to come here, I certainly don't support going out and seeking one. Anyway, that's my two cents. Does anybody else have any other comments? Okay, so, yes, we are supposed to give direction to staff, so what is that direction?
Well, if I, just for your consideration, Mayor and Council, is our current workload and our work plans that can, given consideration to all the other workload that we have, that this, unless you ask me to reprioritize our current workload and move this up to the top, but foreseeably, this is probably not going to be something that we'll get to. At least, I just sent you earlier today the fourth quarter agenda matrix, and it's just a lot of work to be done. So more likely, from a work planning, I would incorporate this into the first quarter of next year.
Okay, so that being said, would the Council want to then give staff direction to, I mean, I don't know what specifically we're moving forward with, specifically moving forward with letting a vendor propose a trial period?
I would recommend that we do some research with an RFP, see how some of these other cities have done it, and we can issue, prepare an RFP to issue after the first of the year to see what companies out there would be, are interested, as you have said, coming to Gilroy. But I would, I would recommend we do an RFP process first.
So then that would be the city actually going out and soliciting a vendor?
If we want to try, have a trial period, I mean, you would have to do that, right?
I guess.
How else are you going to?
No, or you do nothing until a vendor asks.
Yeah, but then you still have to do it, because you have to be fair to all the other vendors. So even if a vendor came forward and asked, we would still have to do an RFP legally.
I did not know that. Okay. Okay.
Anyways, I'll propose that we go forward with, with that objective of getting an RFP at the first of the year, or whenever your work plan allows it, on a trial basis, and include all the concerns that were stated.
And I'll second that motion.
With that direction, okay. All right, so, everybody okay with that direction? Okay, we have one. Dion says no. All right.
Four to one.
Moving on, yes, four to one.